Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Education August 15, 2017 meeting to order at this point. Roll call please.
Pat Reschewski, President. David Schmidt. Brian Mahon. Doug Houston. Brian Deason.
President.
Stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do we have a virtue card today?
Sure.
Fantastic.
Integrity. Integrity is living by your highest values. It is being honest and sincere. Integrity helps you to listen to your conscience, to do the right thing, and to tell the truth. You act with integrity when your words and actions match. Integrity gives you self-respect and a peaceful heart. You're practicing integrity when you think about what virtues matter to you, stand up for what you believe in, do the right thing even when it is hard, willingly clean up your mistakes, think for yourself, and avoid temptation. Affirmation. I have integrity. I stand up for what is right. I mean what I say and say what I mean. I am my own leader.
Thank you very much. Board of Education, developed guidelines for how we'll conduct our business. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views even when views are not in line with all numbers, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this point, I'd like to entertain any public comments.
I'd like to introduce Anita Nakwoma, who is the Governance Council President for the Macusa Community School. She's got some talking points and updates.
Please excuse me if I stumble with my language. I'm not a very good speaker.
Could you move to the left or your right just a little bit? There you go.
Or do you want her to sit down? She can sit down otherwise.
There we go. You're fine.
I'm going to sit down.
You did sit down awful fast.
Well, first of all, coming here on behalf of the Macusa Charter School Board, we are looking to amend our contract between the Macusa School Board and the Mcusa Community School, which hopefully the contract is in place. One of the things that we are going to try to offer is we would like to offer Ho-Chunk Language and Culture, one and two, on this next school year. And the other thing is we have not matched a teacher with the Macusa Community School.
Yeah, in the Macusa Community School, we teach a position in the complex position where, you know, it requires a knowledge of project-based learning and infusing the Ho-Chunk Language and Culture. And we've made some efforts to explore the candidate pool out there. We haven't found a candidate that matches that. You know, and with the Ho-Chunk Language and Culture course offerings, that would be to students in AMX so that they would have an opportunity to still engage in that Ho-Chunk Language and Culture even though the Macusa Community School as it was in the past wouldn't exist for this upcoming school year as it had.
Thank you very much for your comments. And, you know, this is something that one of the public comments section does not really, a whole lot we can do with this. I believe it's... ...a passion for it, and I want to thank you for that.
I'm passionate about that.
Yeah.
One of the other things that we're going to try to do is to explore the possibility of experiences and partnerships with the Macusa School District to preserve the Ho-Chunk Language and Culture. And by that, you know, even though we're not going to have the Macusa Charter School, we would still like to offer the Language and Culture for all the students. I don't know about high school or whether to try to keep that in the middle school right now. And then we're also going to look into the possibility of our Language and Culture teacher that we have right now to get his license in teaching that education. And working with that because we have found that he is doing really well with the children that were at the charter school. And we ask you to keep you updated on our efforts to achieve our mission. And we look forward to keeping a partnership with the Macusa School District with the educational approach for our students.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Thank you very much for sharing that with us.
Do you have any students that would be interested in a teacher?
There would be, there would have been two students that would have been...
You know, a teacher.
Correct.
And the Ho-Chunk Language teacher is still with us, so we want to maximize his...
So if we find a teacher...
Talents.
I'm not sure if that's the direction that the board wants to go right now with that. You know, they're looking at the best way to use their resources that they have. And so they're looking at exploring some other options.
Which we'll get on an upcoming agenda.
And we don't even know all those options. They're just trying to explore other ways to reach that mission.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
You did well.
Thank you very much, Anita. You do have talent.
Well, thank you for hearing me tonight. And hopefully, you know, I'll be back again, or I'm sure I'll be back again, to let everybody pursue the relationship that we built, you know, between the Charter School and the School District. I know it's also one of the things that I've tried to do.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Anita.
I'm so nervous.
It's nice to have public comments.
Yes.
That's generally a quiet period, so we welcome that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome to say if you'd like to. We like an audience. But you don't have to. It's up to you.
I have to. I need to go play golf.
Oh, good luck.
That's important too.
Brian's right with you on that one.
Hang on to him, Pat.
Okay. Thanks, Anita. Well, we're going to move on. Showcasing schools and student learning, R3. We're going to be looking at a CWSA update.
We had our meeting last night, and I got called up by Claire.
Hey, congratulations.
Nice job, Claire.
Well, I'd like to introduce Wendy Brunn, too. She is our treasurer on the CWSA Governance Council, and she has been on since today and has brought some new ideas, a new light, and method of organization to the government.
Good to have her. All right, so last night we talked to the staff, basically gave us a bunch of updates about things that we're not going to do this year. One of those was a standard tracking sheet and learning profile that they're establishing based on some visits that they've done in Charlotte. And what it will be is essentially a spreadsheet that will live with that child, that student, for the three years that they're able to stay within the stomachs that they need. And it will track what their objectives essentially are around, you know, the types of things that we need to meet from an education standpoint, and be able to use that during the PLP conversations between the staff and the student every, their targeting every cover week to really make the student kind of take ownership of the type of learning that they're getting, how they're incorporating that learning and those objectives into their projects, and making sure that they're meeting all of the requirements between the first grade, the second grade, and the third grade. So I did, I just, you guys can pass this around. The discussion last night was really around kind of looking at that spreadsheet and then talking about ideas around how we could make that into our SLR for this new school year.
Cool.
And, okay, any questions on that?
What's a PLP discussion?
They basically, I think of it, I don't know what it stands for, but the way I think of it as a parent is really, like I would have a one-on-one with my associate at work where I'm having a conversation to say, this is what you're doing well, what do you think you're doing well? This is where you think you can use in the program? This is where you're following design somewhere? And those are those categories.
A PLP is Personalized Learning Plan, you know, which is, I think it's number two on plan on the page and really looking at personalized learning as far as an individual tracking and plan for the, how the student is going to accomplish for the standards.
One of the benefits, benefits, I think, of the new spreadsheet is just having it all in one place. So instead of having, you know, our star and our math scores and reading scores in one place, and then hopefully plus our math and, that spreadsheet pulls everything together, and it will just stay with the student. So we'll see how this works.
Did you state how often this discussion would take place with them?
Minimum of every other week. That's the target. I mean, they're really wanting to do it every week, but we'll have to see how this goes.
Yeah, the reason I ask is you've got this, you know, your thing, your chart is monthly. And I'm just wondering how often it was, but, okay. I must apologize for not attending Monday's meeting.
It was a good one. We had a lot of good discussion about what the upcoming year is going to be. The other thing that we wanted to bring to the board of attention is really, we also are looking at some contract agreements, mostly based on clarification. So I think when that contract was originally set up, the stomach operating in different, kind of under different capacity, different limitations, different, you know, starting with the grant. As we've been working through some of the things that, you know, we need to do because we're at thirty-five and two for staff, or that we want to do, and we're reviewing the contract and the bylaws, we're finding that the contract has some things that just need to be clarified. One of them was, we have a meeting once, the contract says that it has to be fixed by monitoring, and it indicates current student has some kind of advantages to that process, but there's no definition of what the, what current means. So last night we asked, and like four of us looked with different answers. So just want to, you know, most submit that from a moment that's on point. I would give you guys to look around. I don't think we're going to do a big, probably just really clarification on first.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up to the plate to serve on that council. And as treasurer, begin by these things, and, you know, I said...
I'm very, very excited for you to be the chair.
You know, we need more people like you that are willing to step up and fill these roles. The stewardship and, you know, guidance of that school is a huge responsibility. Thank you very much.
And she's taking it to heart, so thank you, yeah.
Fantastic. That's what I want to hear. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, um, do we want to move the wellness policy?
That would be great. I bet Cody would love that.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we...
Lynn, are you okay with that? Thank you, Lynn.
We're going to, we're going to jump right to you, Cody. And this is a wellness policy update.
Right. The first thing we're passing on here is about the actual policy. It's not even a fourth policy, but it's just some of the ideas I thought today. Before I start, I just wanted to introduce myself. I am helpful wellness director for the Macusa School District. My biggest background is a nutrition, a bachelor in exercise science, and a master in nutrition. I've talked to Macusa, I grew up here, lived here all my life, was an athlete, graduated from the Macusa High School, and then graduated with my masters. I wanted to come back here to the district and be a role model to the community and the students of Health and Nutrition. There's nothing more that I care about for the health of my community school in the area. With that initiative and the day of my hire, I've been working for months making our school and district the healthiest in Wisconsin. Today, I'm happy to announce that I've won the Healthy School Award for our district. There are three levels, a bronze, a silver, and a gold, and I won a gold award for our district. With that gold award, we are one out of eight schools in the whole entire state of Wisconsin. And being a gold winner recognizes you in the state of Wisconsin for monetary causes for our district. With that interview, they said the main reason was for the winning of the award was due to my nutrition. The effects that I've been in the district the past five, six, seven months is what helped us be recognized for the gold award. Most school districts take three years, the one they were awarded took five months. I'm proud to accomplish this and give the opportunity to change the culture on the Macusa community. This is something that we would like to take the heart of nutrition and wellness for our community schools to take. So I'm proud to be a part of our community service for this community, this group, and this mission to improve. Any questions on the school award?
Cody, I'm just curious, and I'm sure the board is too, what were some of the questions or some of the benchmarks that you had to demonstrate?
The biggest factor is nutrition because of the effects I've been experiencing in health, to going to the doctor, your wellness, school lunch programs. So the biggest decision that they made for us to win the gold award in regards to silver and bronze was that I helped the district lead a nightly college in five months. So that was a huge side factor, and also my work with the athletes, like the wrestlers, and stuff like that. So that was a huge factor with our faculty and employees. And then, since we've won this award, if my work does continue, we will be eligible for a national award with more months of our mission and our desire. I wanted to share that in regards to my work in law school. I'll have you guys turn to F. Everett's here. I wanted to go over our mission and vision. Our mission for the wellness policy is to become the healthiest school district in the state of Wisconsin. Winning the national award will make us super, super close to that, so that's very exciting. I'm really, really pleased we're taking the gold here. Our vision is to provide a happy and healthy environment that health is maximum, community, students, staff, and education. Well, I just had some duties on committee. I spent probably about a good six months upon my hire reviewing the wellness policy, the health plans, things going good, things not going good. When I was actually recruiting for faculty and community members to be on the committee, I wanted to make sure that they were as passionate as I was, someone that wasn't, that wasn't really good off faculty and muscle too, someone that really wanted to stay with the plan and help this new higher nutrition wellness initiative grow. So those first five, six months, there were a lot of recruiting, talking to community members, faculty, and groups to, you know, for that. We ended up recruiting about thirty people. We currently have twelve staff members for the wellness committee and two students. We've hit two junior students that should answer and help the wellness nutrition. So those duties of the wellness committee is to be a role model advocate in the community and school in regards to health and wellness. What we do is review and assess the local wellness policy. We are currently reviewing the policy as, you know, five or six years ago before I took this position. So right now, we're reviewing it once a month, and we typically do it once a month to review and tell that we're happy through reviewing it towards, I'd say, twenty-nine, the first semester of school, and we're implementing the ideas and the stuff to make our school district healthier. We also assess the current policy from physical and environmental sustainability. I work a lot with the gym teachers, chef man, our lunch program. Currently, I'm working with Chef Man on putting in the calories and the protein supplements for our lunch program, like focusing on the tasks to help our high school students make more healthier choices, the amount they're putting in the lobbies. That's just an example of what we've been doing there. And then we're engaging in developing communication and coalition with community stakeholders. I've been working with Aspiris, Y M C A, and hoping to engage with March for some way down the road with, you know, youth loss, diabetes, stuff like that, and prevention for the younger kids who are coming in early here by this year. And then we'll continue to inform, update the public about the content, information, and assessment for the wellness policy. And then the last one here is we're going to put those wellness policy in action. Any questions on this, on this part, for the recruitment process, or missions you're leading? So for our wellness policy, we have five guidelines. We have the initial wellness policy, the curriculum, nutrition standards, nutrition guidelines, and then the non-food service guidelines. So inside each of these five guidelines here are all the goals that we want to hit. So we have, you know, the nutrition guidelines, the public development, and the establishment of a plan, which we all have here. And then for the school, we have our nutrition education, our FIA. We have the five components of that FIA, the physical, the D and I, and there's stuff like that. You know, we also have the positive medical documentation for, you know, participating in those classes. Nutrition standards, we're still working on here. We have the school lunch programs, the income eligibility, the bar code system, education culture, and then what we're trying to do right now with this coming school year is make sure more, you know, we do like school lunch programs, making healthy courses, and we're trying to get anything from athletes, from community members, and school members to contribute something. This is a work in progress, but it's going a while here. And part of, part of that work in progress with the school lunch program is following the U S B guidelines. We follow all of that. There's always new things coming in and old things coming out, so Chef Man, that is still popular and continuing. With this incoming school, we're really coming more nutritionist, you know, with the guidelines. And some of those guidelines are just ten percent total calories from trans fat, return your fat fats, and then your total calories from that. So we're going to want some bad fats and some healthy fats to maybe make that climb to fifty percent. And we think we have some examples, we have, you know, some of the last two we saw, they're fifty percent, so we're not going to put any of that in our school lunch program. And then with our community gardens, you know, we really want to implement grassroots food, like speed food, and probably all the two most along with farmer's school, which is something I would like to bring more, this coming year. And then we have a non-food service guideline, specifically for like football players, track teams. It's like the vending machines are offering the D, competitive price, the healthy versus unhealthy. So hopefully somewhere down the road, K K F R will be, you know, a lot more than a good amount of health, you know, makes a choose a healthy choice. And then, you know, we have a low-fat milk in our school district, and it is obviously off the other state for sure. And then when it comes to farmers and alternatives, I know the soccer team already is implementing healthy choices. You know, we have, we have some candy and health alternatives that have done itself, so there's some work that we're really looking at here. Like I said, you know, we talked about the five components, and right now I'm really working hard with Chef Man on the nutrition guidelines that we're going to work on. The wellness policy here is a work in progress. And like I said, we're halfway through on completing the actual assessment, and the work will be implemented more as a street. So there's a lot of exciting things happening with the wellness policy. So, maybe we have any questions on our actual policy? Again, this is just not even a fourth one, like the policy. It's one of the main, the main points that we have to do in regards to that position.
I don't have any questions, Cody, but we've done a lot of work here, a lot of good work.
Yeah, it's been a challenge, and it's, but it's exciting work, and it's kind of just really passionate about nutrition and health. So I don't even consider it a job, it's so much...
So that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you give just a snapshot of your work, you know, over the summer?
Yeah.
And that certainly ties in here, but...
Over the summer, I worked with older seven kids for speed and agility nutrition classes, strength and conditioning, putting in a lot of size on a football players, wrestlers, increasing speed for, you know, track athletes, football athletes. And I also did a nutrition class a couple months ago, and we had thirteen members who, you know, they lost over a hundred and twenty pounds as well. So what I really strive to do is to reduce the prevalence of obesity over a little bit of my community school district. So I like to, with my background, I love to really put that knowledge and education out there to help my community athletes, students, athletes, you know, lose weight. If you lose weight, or, you know, become more healthier, your work gets better, your students are more in the class, you make people happy, and it's just, you're just another person that you, you know, so. All the work that I do is, you know, has, I put all my heart into my work because I'm working with everybody that just tends to be healthy. Okay, and then I'm also working on the school thing, which is the twenty eighth of this month. Katie Peavers and I are working on, including the Chef Man, with another health and wellness picnic. We're going to do, we're going to try to find an alternative, and this is going to, you know, fun to me, like the gossamer, we're going to do an alternative, a healthy option for you. And then, so we're trying to put like healthy baskets together for a racquet, literally, like a fifth or something like that, too. I really want to put a twist on it, you know, the baskets and having the visuals, racquet, for especially like the reason that I'm keep, keep this happening, because I feel like a change is right in a few, so I think I put my position on there if we make this change happen, and I figure, you know, my way back, so I make this change happen. So that's kind of, I have a question.
The picnic event on the twenty-eighth, and all four members and five members, everybody, is your...
Where is I? So maybe you'll pick up some healthy hints from Cody down there. Someone like, or Brian said. Cody, on that second, that duties of committee, that the bullet aid in program and curriculum evaluation oversight through...
Through WellSET.
What is WellSET?
That is like a computer program that helps you evaluate if you got stuck, you didn't know where to go. Your wellness community, it takes on a little bit, so it gives you evaluations if you're, if you're at a...
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody, very much, for your, for your work. Good work. Very good work. Okay, we're going to move on to operational expectations and monitoring tools.
Oh wait, the approval of...
Yep. I'm sorry, Lynn. I want to step back and go back to the approval of the 2017, 2018 school nutrition milk fit.
Yep, this is an annual item that the school board, well, doesn't have to approve, but we'd like it approved. Each year, we send out bids to vendors, and we advertise them in the center of our distribution. We ask for bids to bid on our milk, and that's a requirement by the state. Typically, we only receive one bid back, and again, that is no good for the district, it's one bid from the food. The prices are a bit higher, but, I mean, there's really no other options for us. So I'm asking that the board approves the 2017, '18 milk fit and awards it to the community.
Thank you.
Roll call. Roll call? Do you have your roll call on? Roll call, roll call, do you have your roll call on, on, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, Lynn. Now, we're on to operational expectations and monitoring tools, O E three, treatment of stakeholders. This is part of our policy governance model, and the treatment of stakeholders, this, this policy is, is really lies with the district administrator, and it, the statement, guiding statement is district administrator shall maintain a district culture that treats all stakeholders with respect, dignity, and courtesy. Um, the interpretation is the district administrator will manage information in such ways that confidential information is protected, effectively handle complaints, and maintain a district culture that values differences of opinion, reasonably includes people in decisions that affect them, and provides open and honest communication and written and interpersonal interaction. Focuses on common achievement of the board results policies, and maintains an open, responsive, and welcoming environment. Um, this is a policy that, that the board, in fact, we discussed in our Thursday meeting. And, you know, there's some real strengths in this, and Terry did a lot of reflection on, you know, how, what, his responsibilities within our district and the culture, and the, you know, the stakeholders that, you know, range from our community members, our students, our teachers. And, you know, during that discussion, Terry made a comment that really kind of stuck with me. And it's something that I, I just kind of like to mention, um, that, you know, he, you know, his responsibilities, um, are to all stakeholders, and he needs, you know, to, to understand the community, understand the teachers, and, you know, shift the focus and, and respond. And there were some real strengths in that reflection, and, you know, Terry or any of the board members, I don't know if you have any comments on the strengths that you found in that area? I think it was a really strong policy.
Well, I think I, I'd have to say, we're going back to that, maintains a district culture that values individual differences of opinion. I think through conversations that I've had with people, you know, uh, I, I often hear that people don't feel like perhaps the district, uh, values those individual differences of opinion. So that's a, a real area, so whether you see it as a, as a, as a strength or a weakness, a strength is that we are really trying hard to work on that. So, and I think that's what you're referring to, correct?
That's kind of what I'm trying to get to, yeah, and, you know, the, the reflection and the, and the, you know, the actual information and substantiation of, of, you know, how you're satisfying this is, is to be commended. Um, and at this point, um, I would, you know, based upon the information and the board discussions, the board finds itself to be in full and complete compliance. And at this point, um, I'd like to, there's a motion on the floor for approving the board district operational expectation, O E three. Is there any other comments from our board members that you'd like to bring out?
No, well, this, this was a pretty thorough policy, and, uh, we had a good conversation last week.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. And I think, you know, we talked about putting down strengths and weaknesses. I think it's been captured in that evidence of compliance.
I agree.
So I think that can be cited in the...
Absolutely.
Our ongoing documentation.
Yep. Okay, motion on the floor.
Someone, second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Shre- or Mr. Estes, and second by you. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, the next policy we have is B forward slash S R dash three, staff accountability. The policy statement, as the board's sole link to the district, district operations, the district administrator has exclusive authority over staff and has exclusive right to delegate that authority. Staff are accountable only to the district administrator and their prospective supervisors as determined by the district administrator. Um, and this is, this is kind of important, according to the board will never give instruction or direction to any staff other than the district administrator. The board will not evaluate any staff member other than the district administrator. And then, except for stating its values to policy and fulfilling any statutory or contractual mandates in regard to such matters, the board will refrain from participating in decisions or actions involving the hiring, evaluating discipline, or dismissal of any employee other than the district administrator. And the turn, the turn, interpretation is, um, that the board is only accountable to the district administrator. All staff conduct and district operations are accountable to the district administrator. And all board members and the district administrator, um, were contacted and asked for any violations. There were no violations found with regards to this policy. And I, I guess, is, is there any discussion on strengths or weaknesses, um, of this policy that you'd like to bring to light? Okay, I'd like, uh, for the motion on the floor that, uh, B four slash S R, no, there's a motion on the floor, B four slash, four slash S R three monitoring tool. Uh, be, be accepted, uh, as presented.
And, and, um, full compliance.
Full compliance, yep.
So...
Okay, we have, uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Governance policy, G P three, governing, governing style. Um, again, this is a, this is a pretty strong document, and it, and it really defines the board's responsibility. And I think, you know, we talked about the fiduciary responsibilities of, uh, you know, C W O C A, Governance Council. These are the same guidelines by which we are, we are forced to operate. And we, it's, you know, there's a, a lot of, you know, we have some pretty large responsibilities within the district, and, and this policy covers those. The key things in here, I think, is that the board will cultivate a sense of group responsibility, working in partnership with the district administrator, staff, students, parents, and community. The board will be responsible for excellence in governing, using individual board members' talents and expertise to enhance the board entity, while, while preserving the board's collective judgments and values. Um, the board will conduct its business at meetings using the parliamentary procedures, detail the novice rules and orders for small boards. It goes on and on, but it, it really, you know, reinforces that fiduciary responsibility that we as board members have. And it, it, it's, it's in accordance with our, with our, our, uh, guidelines that we, we spoke over earlier. And I guess, absent any discussion, any discussion, thanks, gentlemen. Um, motion on the floor to find ourselves in full compliance, uh, with G P three dash three governing style. Very good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, we are at policy approval. Um, second and final reading for two policies, um, learning environment forward slash T treatment of students, O E five, and financial administration, O E seven. These were policies, um, one went back to the policy committee, changed the language to reflect actual, actual practices, and the other one, just needed some tweaks, saw it, at this point, um, unless there's any objections, I mean, there's a motion on the floor to approve policies, O E five, learning environment forward slash treatment of students. And O E seven, financial administration, as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen. At this point, we are... Other board work, um, there are some documents that were presented to the board for informational purposes only. One being the, uh, Humky Elementary School Student Handbook. Um, the other, the A M, A M S Behavior, Behavior Plan, um...
I think we, John, do you want to speak too? Did you have anything you wanted to share, and then I know, uh, Clint and Brian want to share on the A M S, if that's okay?
Very good.
Um, you know, briefly, I'll just say, you know, when, in terms of looking at our handbook, it really is, it's not student handbook, so like, it's like a parent handbook. So we take that mentality, it's just providing, here are the things that you want to know to help you guide your, uh, partnership with us. So it's, it's just, these are the things that you want to know, the little nuts and bolts, and how to help guide your students, you know, and I, I, before I send that, before you get that in your hands, to us, it's some type of welcome letter, just saying, here's the other little things you know to help run, to make issue control in this school. The parent handbook is like a, a really, really thing that you want to know, and so that's really the gist of it.
Sure.
And we, we put in a certain thing that is required to, as principles, that the parents know also, so that's a good thing.
And I did note that you are going to be combining the parent advisory group with the existing parent organization, and that's kind of a, you know, kind of a natural...
Yeah, next week, Monday, in fact, um, we had left out at the end of the year, and just because we had P I P O, Parent Advisory Board, and really what ended up happening is P I P O folks were saying, you know, that's really what we wanted to be doing too, it's like, I want to be doing this too. So we've been on this journey to, to bring these groups together, and we're meeting next week, Monday, to take that next step, and we don't really know for sure if we're working on that vision together, and, you know, having that lesson today, and we better take the next step in that journey, probably just begin that rehoming, and, 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 but our goal is to really, to create a situation that allows our parents to be partners, and really be a parent teacher organization, where we have members of our staff and our community working together, you know, kind of what we just talked about in the previous governance policy, help drive our work forward, and be partners with, as opposed to saying, you will be doing it. So, give us your thoughts, what, you know, where do you want to see us be? And so that's a clear for all of you.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty, a, a very important aspect of that, of that change, so, thank you very much for that, that summary. Um, Mr., Mr....
Yeah, um, I come to you today, you know, fresh off of the second day of our responsive classroom training, which is very exciting, and we've had some deep discussions, and Brian and Nathan have been a part of, and Terry's been a, a part of too. Um, you know, we, we provided with, for you, a copy of really the preventative measures of a behavior plan that, that was generated with community input, uh, with guest teacher input, student input, teacher input. Uh, but really, a big piece of that behavior plan is the preventative measures, as well as the reactive measures, and there's a balance there. And what we're digging into right now in our training is a lot of those preventative measures, and really what, you know, we call tier one, um, solid practices, and make sure that we're building that system of solid practices, and then those reactive measures feed into that system. In, in responsive classroom, you know, the basis of responsive classroom is an advisory, where you give the kids a sense of belonging, significance, and fun. And really, that's the basis in which, um, the responsive classroom approach, and approaches, we've talked about that, the responsive classroom approach, being called an approach, it's, it's not just the advisory, it's not just teacher language, it's not just interactive modeling, it's all those things working in a symbiotic relationship, I'm going to quote our trainer, and really, um, because, because they build and feed off of one another. And really, it's all around getting kids those, that basic belonging significance and fun, in terms to move them forward socially and academically. And really provide, like I said, the strengthening of, of a, of a very strong social and academic system. You know, we talked about social competencies and academic competencies in that course, and really begin to how we can, how we can, uh, bring them alive in our everyday teaching and planning.
So he kind of explained the overall, but what I did is I met with Clint then, and actually took some of those ideas and everything, and we're actually turning those into action steps then. How do we make that happen? So kind of some of the tasks that we're going to work on this year, so from that group, you're going to look at your teachers, and you're going to kind of create a committee. And we're calling it two to make this a system, so we know what our tier ones supports are, our tier two and tier three are. You're going to have a committee that's going to meet on a weekly basis. And they're going to work on writing the handbook that says, here's our tier one practices, and this is what the expectation is. And then as part of that as well, we're going to create fidelity checks. So like you talked about the teacher language, the advisory, um...
Interactive modeling.
Interactive modeling. So they're going to go in and do observations and give teachers back, because this is a new process this year. We need to support teachers, give them feedback, and say, here's what's going well, here's something you can work on, and just giving that coaching piece. So we're going to create those checks, so that way we're nurturing it as we're putting it into place. And then also two, and with, with those checks, you know, focusing on process, you know, making sure that those processes are in place, that we're using some of those, um, that interactive modeling, and using some of that, uh, interactive learning structures, and, and coaching towards making that process seem like, you know, it's not necessarily going in there and saying, oh, you're not doing that, you're not doing that, you are doing that. It's, here, we've seen these positive things connected with these practices, and here's how, here's the advice we have on, on making that more solid, more systematic.
How often will, uh, a, a staff member have an opportunity to be observed and then provide, uh, you know, to ask for help and things like that? How often is that going to happen?
Between the beginning of the year and November twenty second, each teacher will be observed five times.
Oh, okay, that's a lot, okay.
Well, and it's not just myself doing the observations and coaching, it's Cory, Anthony, Senator Guy, the counselor, and John Thomas, our assistant principal, and teaming up and saying, okay, we've got to, we've got to provide feedback and coaching to all these individuals that have advisory.
And so, uh, I mean, that's a lot of touch points, so that's, I mean, that's, uh, doable, it's doable for you guys?
It's doable, it's a, it's a challenge, but it's doable.
Okay.
Can I elaborate, and then I'll take your questions out?
Sure.
And part of that too is when they do the observations at first, I'm going to also be there, but then we're going to do it in pairs. Because, you know, if Clint is seeing one thing and I'm seeing a different thing, how are we making sure we're giving consistent messages to staff? Because I don't want them to have, well, Cory tells me this, Clint tells me this, John, we're going to do it in pairs to get greater fidelity as well, to make sure we're saying the same things, we're giving similar feedbacks, so staff isn't getting separate messages, you know, that, that...
Okay. So if I understand this right, this is about building team?
Yeah.
Building team, so the teacher's no longer totally responsible on their own for the results, the team is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's part of our task too, so as I go down further, it's creating the handbook, and like I said, that's one of the tasks we're going to do within a committee. And then you're going to have the fidelity checks, but also two, to address your team question, and then I'll go back to another point.
Okay.
Another skill that we're going to work on is looking at our referral data as it comes in. Because what Cory is doing this year, he's creating a schedule of topics that we're going to cover during advisory. So like if it's bullying prevention month, or it's suicide prevention month, he's going to give three weeks worth of kind of lessons to help teachers, give them ideas of what to be talking about in advisory. But that fourth week, during that third week, we're going to meet with teachers and just go over their office referral data and look at it as a team. And then that fourth week, that's where they, as a team, get to decide, oh, if they have high... high incidences in, say, targeting us, okay, how are we going to do advisory and coach our kids about, okay, how do we address this targeting, this challenge together as a team? So we're going to help them start looking at that office referral data to see, are we seeing changes as we go forward? And then two, part of, one of their staff needs among, they're going to look at the data as a whole school and say, what are our challenges? And kind of taking ownership together. So it's going to be multiple, but that's part of our to-do list is look at that as a whole, look as a team, and kind of all of us take ownership, how are we going to address this?
Fairly deep conversation today and yesterday, you know, we were talking about that team approach to, it's got to be all of us creating this system, and all of us having input on this, you know, and, and John Thomas, you know, asked yesterday, he's like, what do you guys think of that? That unit plan that, you know, Brian talked about, Cory working on, and they said, that would be like a great resource and a great support, and bring some of that fitness to how we're going to culture.
My, my thought is if I'm a teacher, and I know, and even if I'm struggling and things don't look good, I'm going to be, I would be happy with this because I, you know, would think, okay, I got a support system behind me.
Correct.
And they're not here just to tell me, okay, this is what you're doing wrong, blah, blah, blah. They're here to find a solution for me and help me through it.
Well, and we've got to focus on strengths as well, just like.
Right, 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 or, right.
And, and all of them have very good strengths that they're, that can be utilized within different thread used in this.
But, but I'm just saying, Clint, if I'm a teacher that's struggling with something, I'm not going to beat myself up because I'm struggling, because I know, hey, they got my back.
Correct.
Okay.
And then.
This, this sounds good.
The other part two that they're working on, well, Cory's going to work on it, he's going to have that schedule, but he's going to work on creating an online resource finder, so if the topic is bullying prevention month, okay, you have the three weeks, and we're going to talk bullying prevention, hey, what if I don't know how to teach bullying prevention? Or what are ideas do I have? He's going to work on an online resource that has all these different lessons and things like that for teachers to pull from, to say, okay, here are ideas, here's acting out activity, here's a writing activity, here's a talking activity. So that way, two, it's not doing the same thing for three weeks, you have different activities to pull from. So that way, they're not like, okay, I don't know how to teach this. Here's a lesson, here's some ideas, here's a thing for you to pull from. But that way, two, the team, if you're all doing the same thing as well, you can pull from each other. How did you do it today? How did you do it today? We can get those ideas. So that's just kind of some of our action steps to take that idea, and now let's get a system to it. So we're going to create the handbook, the units, the resource finder, and then go over data with teams. So that fourth week, we're kind of doing focus advisories, where we're looking at your data and saying, okay, where are your students struggling, how can we support them?
Exciting stuff.
So if you have a chance, in the next couple of days, they're going to be at the middle school from.
We're in the CWSA space, two, five, eight, six.
So the next three days, actually.
Well, Friday, we're doing support staff office on the year, so eight to three thirty, we, or sorry, eight, although we do go to three thirties today.
Wow, that's a good sign.
It sounds like there's a lot of great work going on, and, and, you know, I had the opportunity this summer to sit on some of those meetings, like, you know, worked on the consequences aspect. But, you know, it sounds like we're not going to really have a lot of information for, you know, teacher empowerment to start with, or, you know, informing parents about, you know, what our practices are going to be, and, you know, where does that linkage? Are we going to be, you know, waiting until next year before parents are informed about our expectations?
One step of that, if John and I already have blocks of time advertised to parents for open help, and that we're going to be putting together a little half hour presentations and as one effort to try to communicate that to parents.
That's a good idea.
So that's the start of it. Any other questions?
Nope, I think we're good. Thank you guys.
You got their wheels turning, you can tell.
My wheels are better.
I like it, I like it.
Very good, we're up to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to, to mention with regards to consent agenda? Any, 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 any comments?
Clint, do you want to say anything about Jennifer Roth? She's, I know she's served in the district for many years.
Yeah. Jenny said, you know, she, that she's very pleased with her experience in middle school, and she's, she wants to leave on good terms, and after her period of time has expired, through a lot of period of time, she'd like to be on the sub-list, and, and she just said that, you know, now is the right time for her to, to be with her family, and she said, I can start the year if you don't have anybody, and, I mean, everything was just very, I mean, if somebody is going to depart, that's the way you want to think, you know.
I think we'd like to recognize her for her contributions to our district over the years.
What, was it twenty-eight years? Twenty-five?
She said twenty-five in her letter, almost twenty-five, so she would probably know everything.
And there was, there's been a lot of.
Well, it's in, is it in here?
It's in the letter, yeah, it's in her letter.
She's been super to work with since I've been there, and just a very high quality employee, with the mentality that she's wanting to continue to serve in, in some capacity.
And we'd just like to recognize her for, you know, what she's done for our children and our community, and wish her the very best. Fantastic. Donations, any, any other comments?
Do you want, would you like me to read them?
Sure.
Uh, First Congregational Church, two hundred and fifty dollars for essential closet, backpack for kids, the Wisconsin River Garden Club, two hundred and twenty dollars, and Sacred Heart Collections, forty-five dollars.
Thank you for those donations, they're very important. The Backpack for Kids program is something that is, is just core to helping some of our students and families, so thank you very much. Any other comments, consent agenda? If not, I'd like to, I'm sorry, motion.
Are we looking still to replace Jennifer? Or are we answering that?
We're, we're doing interviews.
We're looking.
Yep.
Are we looking for a motion to?
Yep, we're going to look for a motion to approve, like, consent agenda.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion pass. Future meetings slash agenda items, Board Workshop, August tenth, six P M. August tenth has passed. It's not a future meeting, it's a past meeting. Did I date wrong? August tenth.
It should be September.
September tenth, or the seventh, September.
It's a Thursday before the nineteenth.
Okay, very good, very good. We'll get that changed.
It would be the fourteenth.
You know, just some important times for us with the new future orientations, and the, I didn't, it, it came in an email, but can somebody just review those dates, the keynote?
I'd be hap, I'd be happy to, let me call it up here.
We're going to have a keynote speaker, first day.
On the twenty-ninth? Yeah, and please watch, watch those kindness diaries, I mean, they will hook you.
They're on Netflix, uh, he has a Netflix, uh, the keynote speaker has a Netflix.
Leon Logathidis. So if you haven't had a chance to look at those Netflix, has anybody, did you get hooked to?
Is that something you saw?
Uh, yes, yep.
But just.
You really want me to say it again? Leon, Leon Logathidis.
Would you like me to read it? Can I meet you?
Probably can.
Just some important dates that, uh.
Well, it's coming out tomorrow in your update.
It'll be.
You'll be in your update tomorrow.
Some important dates that, you know, if we can make it, reach your like to. And at this point, we're at that time. Adjourned.
Any other upcoming topics to cover?
I think we're good.
Uh, we do have, I would like to just share that, you know, the, the work that we've been doing with the city, you know, there's going to be some upcoming probably dates for that, but the, the city is now moving forward on, what is it, August twenty-fourth? They're having their first strategic planning meeting as a group, so we've got about thirty people that have been invited, uh, for some city planning. And so that came out of one of our last meetings. And then also, Brian, you want to talk a little bit about city rec? I keep putting you on the spot with this.
Yeah. We are finalizing our first kickball tournament, we're going off the hosting in September, and we're hoping to piggyback off of that into some winter activities and just looking for some good tennis sport.
Get some of those. I don't know.
No, let's put, actually, let's put that on there.
The enrollment, the work we've done with the city, I think, is, there's going to be some benefits, I guess that word symbiotic relationship, you know, we're, we're working together. And we're ahead of the curve, more communities are beginning to do this, you know, large cost to taxpayers, our stakeholders, our city government, and our schools, so we need to work together. Great, good things to come of it.
So what, what is the board's thinking on, so I had talked to the mayor, and he had shared, and we had met with Peter Manley from UW Extension. So Peter Manley's facilitating this strategic planning. But, so this committee's meeting in August, when would the board like to have the next joint meeting? Would September make sense? They're, the, the city planning, they're called, we're calling it a city, uh, community planning meeting instead of strategic planning, it just feels better, I guess, but, so they're going to be meeting monthly through January, so it would require the city people and the school board people that are on that committee to, you know, meet an extra time during the month, but so should we shoot for September to do an update on?
I think we, even if it's not the sole topic, that's, we should be, we should meet.
So joint meeting in September?
Yep.
And then the other thing too that got brought up is several people have said, when are we getting back together with the, the area board, the other area school boards? So anybody have thoughts on that?
We need to initiate that consortium again, consortium meeting.
Anybody have an idea when we should do that? We could do it in conjunction with that meeting we go to in Rothschild?
Yeah.
What if we did, what if we met like an hour before that? You don't think they would do that?
I think you should work with those two.
I, I agree with them.
So when would be a good time? Well, I'm saying, but if we met an hour sooner, if the other.
Either that or if you wanted to meet like after that.
No, that's too late.
No, no, I'm not saying during that day, I'm saying, pick a date after that.
Like November.
Right, pick a date after, so you can discuss what was, what you took away from that.
Okay.
You know, I'm not saying to do.
Well, I'll talk to them, see what they have for ideas.
Hopefully they're open to it, it was a very healthy, healthy discussion.
All right.
Any other things on the agenda we want to talk about?
For upcoming, you're talking?
Just, I don't, um, well, we're, I don't know if that's record time, but.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.